Thank you, council colleagues, for serving alongside me and on the big Dallas Councilway. So let's have another round of applause for our And now, to introduce the local office to the new elected Mayor from the city of Dallas, please welcome the United States Senator from Texas, Senator John Horne.
What's the new senator?
Free riding man here to me by Eric L.
I Eric L. Johnson.
I solemn swear.
I solemn swear.
I completely pledge to the faithful and excellent duties of the law,
the duties of the office of Mayor of the City of Dallas, the state of the state of Texas.
Will to the best of my will.
And will to the best of my will.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Reserve, protect, and defend.
Constitution of the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this and of this state.
So help me God.
And now, the honor Preston Robinson and Mr. Jiminy Judd for the city of Dallas will now be introduced to the local office for our incoming council members.
We will free you from your 25, now free you from your 13, free you out. Please wear your right hand as I will now introduce your official oath of law. Please be careful. I say your name. Because I will swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of City Councilmember Mister For the city of Dallas, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my will preserve, protect, and defend of the United States and of this state. So help me God.
Now Mayor Johnson will join City Secretary Willie Johnson to present our new elected council with their official gratitudes of the nation. Councilmember Chad Wesley is entering his third term of District 1. Councilmember Jesse Moreno is entering his second term of District 2. Councilmember Zerin Bracy is entering his first one.
Okay, dying.
The chairman Kevin King-Parton is entering his first one. Councilmember Heidi Wasindia is entering. Councilmember Adam Mathew. Mayor Voltaum to now act his age.
Diane Tru.
Councilmember Paul Blackman. Councilmember Kathy Stewart is entering her first full term representing District 10. She is not entering before her final appearance. Next we have Councilmember Jamie Shaw. Councilmember Karen Middleton is entering. Councilmember Gayden Al Davis is entering her second term. And Councilmember Paul E. Whittington is entering. Thank you to all of the districts. Please one more time give a big round of applause.
Good morning, everyone. It's great to be back in Dallas with my wife standing there somewhere. My family, my friends, and chair today of the council members and the mayor on their new term of office for the leadership of this great Texas, great American city. I want to offer my personal congratulations to all the new returning council members, of course, to my friend Mayor Eric Johnson. People are so much surprised that the mayor and I have such a good working relationship because at first glance, we don't appear to have that much in common. We come from different generations. We come from different races, different political parties. Not only that, he holds three Ivy League degrees in my house. Well, despite those differences, we began working together and quickly realized that we share something in common, which is we care deeply about the people we serve. Texans have entrusted each of us with an awesome responsibility to represent their interests, whether it's your city hall in Dallas or the United States Congress. They're counting on us to implement policies to make their communities safer, healthier, and more prosperous. And now, with the ever-changing times, that work requires a heavy dose of bipartisanship. We have to work together where we can. In the past few years, the challenges of this great city have hatched a great state in ways we never could have ever sustained. From the nightmare that was the pain dinner, to floods and tornadoes, concerns about racial injustice, we need to work hand in hand to ensure Dallas residents receive our very best and best efforts. When you compare the major cities across America, Dallas stands out for all the right reasons. While many major cities are facing a population decline, Dallas is one of the fastest growing cities in the country. It's the driving force behind Texasism in the other states we're experiencing. There's no mistake that many Americans are looking forward to coming to the land of opportunity that we call home. Dallas is an economic giant, just as attractive to Fortune 500 companies as it is to first-time entrepreneurs. Every day, more businesses, more investors are betting on Dallas because of its common sense, business-friendly approach. And of America's 10 largest cities, Dallas is the only one, the only one, with two consecutive years of lowering crime rates across the world. There's no mystery behind why Dallas is able to walk the front. When like officials in many major cities now have a lot of pressure to do things like keep on the police, Mayor Johnson fought to grow the city's police force and improve public safety. As a result, as crime has upped in other places, it came down to Dallas. But Dallas is a national powerhouse. No coincidence. It's a result of strong leadership, effective partnerships, and an enduring commitment to the people who call this city home. I'm grateful for everything Mayor Johnson has done to make Dallas a great place to work, live, and raise a family. And I look forward to our continuing to work together. It's my honor to now introduce the 60th Mayor of the great city of Dallas, my friend Mayor Johnson.
Thank you so much. Thank you so very much. One incredible thing, an incredible thing. I'd also like to thank our United States Senators for John, one of the ancestors, vote for me here today. It is truly amazing that both of our United States Senators are present today to celebrate this very special and joyous occasion for the city of Dallas. And I know that both of our senators have to leave now to actually vote. Later today in Washington, they actually came and delivered work there. So please join me again in thanking them for being here today. Members of the Dallas Council, City Mayor Ron Nuss, City Stat, distinguished guests, family, friends, and of course, my fellow Dallasites. I am honored beyond all possible description to continue serving as the 60th Mayor of the city of Dallas. I think I am entering this simple day with this opportunity, and I am overwhelmed by all of your support. This city is and always will be my home. And I'm Dallas's number one champion and number one cheerleader because I benefited personally from this city's greatness. And what I'm saying right now literally is proof. See, it was exactly 29 years and 18 days ago that I stood on this very stage as a high school senior and delivered a commencement address for the Greek School last night tonight. I attended also a show because my first grade teacher at CM Car, who was a student of Dallas, was there to be that. 29 years and 18 days ago, I stood right here and I shared my hopes, my dreams, and my aspirations for my high school classmates. It's impossible for me to overstate what a blessing it is to stand here today, 29 years, 18 days later, to share my hopes, my dreams, and my aspirations again, but this time for nearly 1.3 million Dallas residents. My dreams came true because of the love and support of this community, which is why I made my life mission to ensure that the dreams of others can come true in this city too. For four years, I fought kids growing up in this vast circumstance, just like I experienced as some of the folks over the state behind me in Dallas, Nashville, are also achieving that. New York-based financial giant Golden Sachs will soon break ground on its new $500 million campus nonparticular. The point is, this year, Golden Sachs Dallas Campus will be the only American office in that firm's portfolio that has every single function of that firm represented. That's right. Dallas is the place to be. And Dallas is well positioned to win in the future. But Dallas' future prosperity is not guaranteed. People can choose to live and work just anywhere they want to these days, which is why Dallas is in competition, not only with our neighbors in the North Texas region. See my friend here, Ben Edgeworth, from Fort Worth. So we're in competition with great cities like Fort Worth, who love competing with us. But we're also in competition with other major cities around the country, not just in this region. And as you know, in Dallas, when we compete, we compete to win. So for example, according to Wall Street Journal, "New York City, the largest and most famous American city, lost nearly 470,000 people between April 2020 and July 2022 because of COVID lockdowns, rise in crime, and an ever-rising loss of living." That's more people than live in the entire city of Miami. So we don't want to be like you, clearly. We also don't want to fall from foot steps to Los Angeles, another great American city that's sad has become overrun by people experiencing homelessness and shedding former headquarters every year to cities like Dallas. To name just two, the world's leading real estate firm, CBRA, moved its global headquarters in California to Dallas in 2020 and construction's by a ton of quality in 2021. Worse still, Dallas has become a Chicago, a city that is less known for its exceptional culture, cuisine, or attractions, and is more known for its truly shopping levels of violent crime and its separately declining population. Today, Dallas is making very different choices than our base city of Dallas. We applied both and solutions to address very complex problems. We focused on Dallas' urgent policy making. And we have honored our residents by a united plan agenda that prioritizes those who have to live with the consequences of our cities. We've taken a firm stance against public corruption. Thank you very much. We invest in restoration projects, making new developments that are going to bring jobs, entertainment, and new life to our city. We've made workforce development. Thank you all of the council for making Thomas and and being so. We've made workforce development a top priority for the first time in our city's history. But most importantly, we prioritize the three biggest generators of oxygen for Dallas residents: home safety, parks, and property capture. The primary responsibility of any government and any level of council Johnson, as you know this, any level of government is to protect its citizens. If Dallas residents don't feel secure, our city's other objectives are guaranteed today. I am incredibly proud that we, we up here, that we prioritize public safety above all else here in Dallas, no matter which way the National Police Department enters the law. At the end of the day, we did recently become. I don't care what anybody tells me, these numbers do not lie. Dallas is the only top 10 city in America to record two consecutive years of year-over-year reductions in every major violent crime category tried by the FBI. No other top 10 American city has achieved anything like what we're seeing in Dallas, period, full stop. This achievement is a testament to the dedication of the government and women of the Dallas Police Department. To the collective strength of our city. You see, in response to national protests following the tragic killing of George Floyd, several major SDC councils across the country, including right here in Texas, voted to cut every police department budget by arbitrary percentages. You know what arbitrary is? It means there are no rhyme and reason to just let's just cut. But not Dallas, not here. We said that Dallas needs more and better training police officers than any support is at all spoken by. Just know this though, I'm talking to councilmen. Know this, know that throughout this next term of term, everyone who's cynics are always on it. And those cynics are going to tell us that we have to pick sides. And those who thrive on division and conflict, they're going to encourage us to believe those cynics. They're going to tell us that we have to choose between a safe city and protecting the rights of people of color. They're telling us to choose between affordable housing or new beautiful public green spaces, delivering high-quality services to all Dallas residents, or lowering our tax rate. But over the last four years, y'all have been around, y'all have seen this movie now. Over the last four years, we've proved that these are false choices and that Dallas residents can't have it all. In this either-or world, you have in me a both-and may, which Dallas deserves frankly. And despite what the cynics and the dividedars tell you, Dallas is the greatest city. And that's why we must choose the greatest every single day for every single Dallas resident, and we must never settle for anything less when it comes to our people. You told me when I was 18 years old that someday I would stand here again in this exact spot, but this time to deliver my second and only address as the Mayor of Dallas. I would believe you. I don't think my mother would believe you. She would believe you more than anybody. I think my family would believe you. 29 years and 18 days ago, my presence on this stage was possible because of my family, my friends, and of course, a loving and supportive Dallas community. It was complete strangers who made that opportunity to be a ten grade school possible. That's Dallas. That's our community. The same holds true today. Thank you doesn't begin in a vague extent of my words. So I'll end this address the way I started. Dallas is and always will be my home. And it's the honor and privilege of a lifetime to continue serving the incredible residents of this city. And it's the honor and privilege of the life to continue serving the incredible residents of this city. I want to work with all my colleagues. I want to work with all of you to preserve and protect and defend the Constitution of laws in the United States of this day, if y'all had to say it, but to preserve, protect, and defend the Dallas dream. I have confidence in all of you, all of you, which makes me confident that the dream will stay alive in this city for generations to come, for my children, for my children's children, for all of your children. So I want to say thank you all for your time today. I ran off and I wanted to, I love you so much. Had something I wanted to share with you. I want to thank you for your presence here today. I want to thank you for your support over the past three years and for all of them from this council and your support for them. I really need it for those cynics and the dividers because they're out there too. And with that, I want to say it is time, it is officially time for your new Dallas City Council to get to work. May God bless each of you and may God bless the great city of Dallas.
By the complete consent of the city senator, mayor, and councilman, and mayor person to join us back on the stage is will be the presentation of yours. Ladies and gentlemen, please enjoy one last selection from the South Dallas. Casa Gracia.
God be the Lord of things. Yes. Thank you, Governor. Thank you for this moment. Thank you for our new mayor. It's not true. Thank you for continuing his legacy and extending his shoes. Now we ask that you would bless America. Why do you bless America and stop by Texas? Why don't you bless Texas, stop at Dallas? Lord bless every street, every avenue, every boulevard. Bless every entity, every school, every business, every marketplace. Bless every community, from halls that sit high to apartments that sit wide, and every person who is a citizen of this. Because all we know that if you bless, will be blessed. Now to him, who are they? To do a seemingly abundantly above all that we have asked, think, or imagined, to him be the glory and the honor and the power.